We'll call to order at seven oh two this town council meeting on October twenty fourth, twenty twenty three seven oh two P M. Everyone could please rise to the budget allegiance followed by enrollment assignments.
Let's go with the lead speaker, the flag of the United States of America, and truly the Republic, Richard's hands, one nation, one guy. And if it's for liberty and justice, we'll act.
Where can be suited? Proclaimations and presentations.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this point to add an agenda item or C for additional proclamations from Representative Backer.
There are, I hold, so that motion is there, is there a, is I think second.
Tim here.
I'd like counsel you to check. And everyone is with us tonight, so all's in favor, say goodbye, saying hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item four C has been added to the proclamation, presentations portion of the agenda. So we'll start for A, which is proclamation honoring retired town employees. Just pull it up here. The first one is proclamation honoring Barbara Pennyjohn on the occasion of her retirement from Town of Talon. Whereas Barbara Pennyjohn is retiring after twelve years of service with the Town of Talon. Barbara has served as library director for those twelve years with steadfast dedication and commitment to the community and patrons of the town library. And whereas Barbara has been invaluable and highly respected member of the Town of Talon. She has extensive knowledge of library's history, its state of the operation, its reference collections, the integrated library system, cataloging, interlibrary loans, three D printing, munis, statistics, working with book clubs, training staff and volunteers. And whereas during her tenure with the Town of Talon, Barbara oversaw extensive other renovations in library in two thousand and eleven, which included improvements such as the skylight and roof repairs, air quality, energy savings, perfection of library materials for moisture, as well as an updated, comfortable, new library for all who enjoy it. And whereas in two thousand and thirteen Barbara supported and successfully helped pass a townwide referendum to expand the library to include an eighty-five seat programmer. Added a mezzanine level, increased office business use space, created new area virtual programming and updated technical equipment throughout the library. And whereas Barbara oversaw the library operations during the COVID nineteen pandemic, which included front curbside pickup, expansion of digital offerings, et cetera, and successfully executed a phased reopening of the library through pandemic operations. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Talon or Town Council and Town Talon that hereby recognizes and thanks Barbara Pennyjohn for her professional and personal dedication to the Town Talon and its citizens. We are our further service to the Town Talon and offer her our sincere and best wishes for the future as she embarks on her retirement. Date of town ticket is twenty fourth day of October, twenty twenty three. So again, I want to thank Barbara for all your work and her with us tonight, but appreciate all the work you do for us. Second proclamation is honoring Lynn Bilywick on the occasion of her retirement from the Town of Talon. I apologize Lynn if I'm butching your name. Whereas Lynn Bilywick is retiring after nearly twenty-five years of dedicated service with the Town of Talon. Lynn has spent the entirety of her career as an executive assistant in the town manager's office, having worked with six town managers in that span. And whereas Lynn has been an invaluable member of the Town of Talon. She has extensive knowledge and behind the scenes work that goes into successfully running the office and supporting the town council on day to day business and community needs, particularly known for her eagle eyes in editing written text. And whereas Lynn's vast institutional knowledge of the inner workings of Town Hall and the town itself that rendered respect to her coworkers, marking her years of service with exemplary dedication. And whereas Lynn overcame obstacles during the COVID nineteen pandemic, alternating work from home and in office when necessary to keep the town manager's office running seamlessly. Now therefore be resolved by the Town Council of the Town Talon that hereby recognizes and thanks Lynn Bilywick for her professional and personal dedication to the Town Talon and its citizens. We honor Lynn for her service to the Town Talon and offer her and her husband Russ our sincere best wishes for the future as she embarks on her retirement as they relocate to Vermont, dated in Talon, Connecticut, this twenty fourth day of October, twenty twenty three. Third, the second next item, four two is a citation from First Responder's Day, National First Responders' Day, rather. The first responders who love whose lives are at risk every day will be honored on the twenty eighth of October at National First Responders' Day. We commend the men and women who perform heroic acts of care every day. We rely on our state police to keep our community safe. Firefighters who run into burning buildings and homes, emergency medical technicians who provide life-saving healthcare at any moment without warning, and our cert volunteers from our community who keep us safe during public events and who are always available during a crisis situation. As the first line of response to our emergency, our dispatchers are always being honored. Many of our firefighters and emergency medical technicians and our volunteers and members of the community, without them, it would not be possible to provide life-saving services daily. Please take a few moments to appreciate the selfless sacrifices our dedicated first responders make to keep us safe every day. We honor the men and women who chose to serve the community as dedicated police officers, firefighters, paramedics, E M Ts and dispatchers. They put their own lives on the line, protect your family and others. It is our pleasure to thank you for your dedication and commitment to the community of Talon. Now therefore, I, Stephen Jones, on behalf of the citizens of Talon, acknowledge the twenty eighth of October, twenty twenty three as National First Responder Day and request that all citizens and businesses of our community reflect on, reflect upon, honor and thank our first responders. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause a seal of Town Talon to be affixed on this twenty eighth day of October, two thousand and twenty-three. The leaked copies will be presented and signed to the various groups in town. And that brings us to four C. Representative Backer, I believe you have something for us this evening.
Oh, I think the chair and everything.
Tim never speaks in this, I can tell you that.
Yeah, you know, it's, you know, like, you know, customary at a meeting or at a, you know, the floor of the house to stand. But it's truly an honor to be here tonight on the request of the Town of Talon to recognize some special individuals. And they're sitting at the table. So to start off with, you know, first and foremost, you guys that step up, you run for office, you care for your community and you want to spend, you know, a couple nights a month at least at this council table and all the local events. But you have your heart and soul in what is right for your community, regardless of party, you all do it because you want to make an impact in your community and you've done that. And it's just completely, you know, you know, a honor to be here and to thank you. So as a request though, so I'm, I'm acting on behalf of the town to provide some citations. And Mister Chairman, if it's okay, I will, I'm going to read them individually, mainly the content of them because of it. So Mister Chair, State of Connecticut, General Assembly official citation introduced by Representative Tammy Nutio, Representative Tim Acton, Senator Jeff Gordon. She didn't know anything about it. Yeah, I don't know. Because this is, this is truly, you know, an honor on my behalf, but also a little bit of all. Here hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers sincere congratulations to Stephen Jones, Chair, Talon Town Council, recognition of four years of dedication and service to the Town of Talon. As a member of the Town Council, your willingness to immerse yourself in the Talon community has been appreciated by many. Best wishes on your continued to make important contributions to your community in the years to come. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given this twenty fourth day of October, twenty three in the state Capitol Hartford, Connecticut, signed by President Pro-Tep Martin Looney. Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, Secretary of State, Stephanie Thomas. Vice Chair. Reads very similar. The State of Connecticut General Assembly official citation signed by the same individuals. Hereby, hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers sincere congratulations to John Reddick, Vice Chair, Talon Town Council. Recognition of six years of dedication to service to the Town of Talon as a member of the Town Council. Your willingness to immerse yourself in the Talon community has been appreciated by many. Best wishes on this continued to make important contributions to your community in years to come. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on a memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Signed by the same leaders of the state, President Pro-Tep Martin Looney, Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, and Secretary of State, Stephanie Thomas. To Luluba. State of Connecticut General Assembly official citation hereby known to all the, be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers sincere congratulations to Luluba. Talon Town Council, recognition of four years of dedication to service to the Town of Talon as a member of the Town Council. Your willingness to immerse yourself in the Talon community has been appreciated by many. Best wishes and you continue to make important contributions to your community in the years to come. Entire membership extends its very best wishes on a memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Signed by President Pro-Tep Martin Looney, Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, and Secretary of State, Stephanie Thomas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that seems safe.
Great idea, Tim, if you want.
Hold it up, Tammy.
Sorry. Get it, I'm up right here.
You all want your own?
No.
Ding 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 ding, I'm good. All right.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
All right, great. Well, thank you for that surprise. Appreciate it. Okay, so that brings us to item five, public petitions, communication and public participation. Any topic within the jurisdiction of the Town Council with a two-minute limit, if you are on Zoom, you can hit star nine. There's a table, say your name and address for the record. I will start with in-person participation. And just as a quick note, there is a public hearing item. Any public participation regarding the public hearing item will be brought forward at that time. So with that, I will go off the public. This is Lappin.
Don Lappin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. Below Town Council, I understand this is the end of the current council as we know it, but that doesn't mean you have to go out like a lamb. The documented well contamination that is impacting multiple properties is still a major issue. The road salt used this upcoming winter will continue to contaminate our wells and our houses and will continue to, and we will continue to face major issues because of the elevated chlorides, elevated chlorides in our water. I urge you to take action. Just because this is a challenging issue and a new council will need to be involved does not mean that steps cannot be taken to expedite this process now. Have individual plans been made to address the unique challenges of each of the four contaminated properties where road salt has been determined to be the major source of pollution? Has the town engaged with deep on any sort of fixes? Has the town contacted, contracted with any well drilling companies to potentially get quotes for some of these issues? As always, I look forward to hearing more from the council and hope to see real progress in the immediate near future.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to Zoom. Hands up at this time, so if you've been perused, if anyone else would like to participate. Right, seeing none going once, going twice, early participation, three times. That brings us to item six, public hearing items, continuing discussion from council meeting on October tenth. Consideration and resolution modified by chapter fifty-one of the Town Downhill regarding license convention and revocation across the of adult range establishments. And I believe Mr. Boy has updates as well as recommendations.
Uh, yes, so I, I met with Councilperson Luba last week and then this week I met with Rick Conti. He had not had the opportunity to research it as there's going to be some language adjustments at the recommendation of both Luba and our town attorney. So my recommendation is to carry the public hearings to the next council meeting, you might have language prepared then.
All right, and I'll go over to Councilman Murray if there's been any correspondence regarding the public hearing item.
There has not.
I'll go to the public if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak on the public hearing item. Uh, no, it's already, it's been continued, yeah, so technically it's still open to receive any public feedback, so. All right. Seeing no hands raised or approaching the table, I'll undertake a motion to continue the public hearing to the first meeting of November, which I believe is the twelfth or thirteenth of November.
Boy, I thought it was fourteenth, but fifth.
Fourteenth, maybe, I might be off by a day.
Fourteenth, I think it's a Tuesday.
Fourteenth.
All right, so to the, assuming, assuming you, you counsel, yes, continues on the Tuesday path with fourteenth. So Indiana Ocean.
So moved.
So like Councilman Luba, is there, second, the Councilman Murray. Seeing a further discussion, all those in favor, say goodbye, saying hi. That's unanimous, it brings us seven A.
Thank you, Mister Chair, that, just to sort of commemorate the discussions that, that were held between Mister Foley, myself, and my request that were presented to Attorney Conti is, after, in the abundance of caution, that, and even though I feel that the way that the language proposed on firm grounds right now, that in order to ensure that there's no issues regarding any type of due process issues. And I also want to make it clear that the proposal was not to remove the ability to, for anyone to, to appeal to Superior Court. That's always an inherent right, no matter what it is. What it was is changing the ability for the process of, of having an automatic stay upon appeal until all court processes were, were exhausted, which is not, I mean, that's not required under due process. That's not required under law. All that is required is for the due process opportunity for a hearing to be held. So the proposal that was put forward that, that I, that I feel would be an appropriate compromise, given all facts, is to basically keep the provision where after a action is taken by the director of our development or public safety director, where if they issue a suspension or if the Town Council is a suspension or anyone within the town community issues a suspension, that the, that the business would have an opportunity to appeal within ten days. And then after that appeal is filed, then that would stay any further execution of that suspension until the point where the Town Council conducts a hearing on it. And then after the Town Council conducts the hearing, that's where that due process would be satisfied because there'd be no adverse effect on the business. It would remain open during the penancy of the appeal. But once the Town Council issues that final decision, then that is a final decision by the Town Council. It satisfies the due process requirements for an administrative hearing. And then at that point, after whatever the decision is by the Town Council, that that would be a final determination. And if there is a continuation, suspension or natural revocation, then that would take immediate effect. And that then the only other response would be is for the business to file an appeal or file an injunction request with the state Superior Court and removing the appellate, I mean, the, the administrative action to a, to the Superior Court where there's different rules because now it's appealing, an administrative decision and not the, and not anything else. So I just, I hope that clarifies the issue for all that's, that are involved, but I think that that would be the appropriate, appropriate compromise to ensure that, that we meet the due process requirements while still giving the town the ability to act quickly as it wishes. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Luba.
I have to clarify a question of Councilman Luba. Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure I understood. If, once the Town Council makes a determination, then the establishment can appeal to Superior Court. Can the Superior Court decide to allow them to open during hearings?
Well, so what would happen is that the process would be is that they would have to essentially, it's a two-step process. One, they would have to file a petition with the court. And they would also have to file simultaneously a request for an injunction to stay the suspension or to stay the suspension or revocation of the license during the penancy of the court proceedings. So it'd be a two, it'd be a two-pronged issue that they would have to address. One, filing their, their, their appeal or filing, not even an appeal, but filing their claim with the Superior Court saying that the administrative proceedings that the town held was insufficient under the state APA Act. But also at the same time, filing an injunction, a request for an injunction to stop the, the revocation proceedings or stop the enforcement of the revocation of the license during the penancy of this Superior Court case.
And so in the current, the way our policy or our code is right now, the establishment could stay open or automatically with, with, at their request can stay open through the entirety of the court proceedings.
Correct, correct, that, that, so it's essentially that they still have the same rights. It's just that it would require them to go to the Superior Court to stay open rather than us automatically, you know, basically, you know, saying, okay, we're going to allow you to stay open, which essentially renders the, the whole appeal process and the enforcement process now void.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you, Larry.
Thank you very much for the question.
All right. With that, move to seven A, reports and words in committee, spoken by the Town Council. Land acquisition advisory committee met, I believe, October twelfth. We did make some recommendations and moving forward with the application to ASWA for the potential acquisition of Palco Marsh. So looking forward to that. We've received letters of support from state legislators, town officials, and also from Crocs. We appreciate their support. Looking forward to that. And then the, I have subcommittee meeting, won't be meeting until November, but I'll send a quick communication over to Brian and some of the other members about organizing, organization and informing the next council to be appropriate liaisons that will be serving as a chair and vice chair of that, that subcommittee. Road salt task force.
Sure, go ahead. That was great. Thank you.
So at our last Road Salt Task Force meeting, we talked about moving steps forward. And we are going to meet with our insurance companies and attorneys to look to move forward on some sort of resolution to one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. That was basically the, the main B for the meeting. Anything else, Katie, have noted?
We are still, well, I think that we are still making requests of the attorneys to bring the next step of, of actions out of executive session so that there can be more community information provided as well as involved.
We did that as well, and we also talked about sharing and presenting some information from the town, the steps we've taken to reduce road salt throughout the town as it relates to the most recent vineyards report. And likely there will be a meeting in bitwixt, the Allen Sage paternity, myself, our Conti, maybe, and somebody from deep informally to discuss how we'll, we'll do it, but eventually it'll also have to be done publicly.
All right, and, and the hope is that, I, I think there was a request for that to happen before the end of the calendar year.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, there was. I would like to have that much before that, but.
But there's been, there seems to be some movement about opening these meetings up so that we can have more information transmitted to our members of our community.
I agree. All right, thank you. Counselor, you to check our subcommittee.
So we need, I think for last time, the Thursday. Again, we've worked so well together, so I just want to put that out there, but we actually have a lot on the agenda. One of them is that we send the four hundred thousand dollar fund in for the green sidewalks. The discussed, recommended to the Town Council is a few items for the Public Works Department, including the public garage facility improvements. Just the items that are on the capital budget that we're going to discuss and how a re vote will partially go to the next council. And make a, you know, people from the committee here, I don't know Lisa, if you want to add anything to it, I don't have a board or anything, so.
Then basically you did sum it up regarding the sidewalk decision request that will be, if the subcommittee recommends it to the Town Council. The goal is not to just eliminate that project altogether, but to put it into the capital plan for funding for the future because of the delay that might be happening because there wouldn't have been sufficient time under the arc of legislation timing. So it's not that we're recommending throwing out the project altogether, but we'll, we'll discuss that.
Yeah.
It becomes forward, but basically what this agenda is going to propose to do is to request those funds added back, request some funds for some other programming, and by the time we're done, if everything does go through the committee, there, the funds will be fully committed with this subcommittee.
Sounds good.
We'll see.
I think that's it for committee is responsible to council, so we'll move to seven B, reports and town council liaisons, and I'll actually start behind, like, Councilman Murray.
Sure, I attended the Historic District Commission meeting last week, I think it was on Wednesday. And they had two public hearings regarding certificate, COA certificates of appropriateness regarding the Old Talon Inn property and solar panels on the UCC church. They did close the public hearing for the private property and issued a certificate of appropriateness. They did not close the hearing on the solar panels for the church. That hearing item will continue next month as the Historic District Commission members had a number of questions regarding the placement, the proposed placement of those solar panels. And they asked some more of the applicant in that matter. So that public hearing is still on their agenda for next month. And I believe based on their required timeframes that they, I believe they said they will have to issue, either issue the certificate of appropriateness or deny it at the next meeting or have a special meeting to address that. They also briefly discussed sidewalks on the green and. briefly discussed, uh, sidewalks on the green and, um.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Murray. Councilor Con.
There was no meeting.
All right. Mr. Regan.
Attended two meetings last week, uh, planning and zoning met on the sixteenth. And they had one business item. It was a discussion of the technology, technology, uh, campus zone, and that's, uh, NERAC. There are two buildings for sale there. And then there's a thirty-eight per parcel across the street. Uh, there was extensive discussion on different uses for, for that area. Uh, they, they, uh, there was a, um, real estate agent there, um, Mr. Reesback, and they talked about, um, you know, potential purchaser, purchases of that, of, of that area. And my impression was there, there, there hasn't been a lot of, uh, interest in that yet. Uh, but they discussed different ways that they can use, utilize that, uh, those, of those two parcels. And that was their business item. That was planning zoning. WPCA met, uh, on the seventeenth and they, they had a, um, pump, there are five pump stations in town. They cleaned four of them and they had an issue with the one across the street from Bay Y. And that needed to be repaired and that has been taken care of at this point. Uh, there's a new hookup application for fifty-nine and sixty-one Belvedere. Uh, they also approved their twenty twenty-four meeting schedule. They're, they're going to be moving to quarterly meetings rather than monthly. Um, and then, uh, they did have a discussion about the, the college view behind, uh, headliners. Uh, and there's nothing going on right now. And the property may have to go to auction at this point is what they have.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Regan. Uh, water commission met on the sixteenth, uh, they received a letter regarding a generator in the village of Great Springs that they'll be getting a response from with CWC, I believe, towards fixing that. Uh, I believe the only other main item they had was the flushing of hydrants was started back then. I think tomorrow is when they should be completed. And then conservation commission met on the twelfth, I believe. I was unable to attend, but refer the minutes. Actually, they did mention the, uh, oddly enough, the college view apartments. I think there's a different foreclosure. And I think they're hoping someone might take over those units and restart up construction in that area. So that is it for me. Councilor Meehan.
Uh, PCC met and just talked about very successful harvest fest, which was great this year. We had more food trucks. And I was on the green all day. There had to be hundreds, hundreds with an S of people that were coming through there. It was great. It was really good. Um, and shifting into the tree lighting ceremony now. I did not make it to the Eastern Highland Health District meeting. Um, I was otherwise occupied and so I did not make that one. I don't know. Did you?
No, I was occupied. I forget what I had too, but I'm the next one. I'm going to ask them to start providing us assistance. Uh, that'll last somewhat aggressively in regards to the water softener systems and how to start creating some sort of infrastructure within our permit process to make sure that people can safely add water softeners or shouldn't add water softeners to their, um, house. Some sort of process to help guide us through that, um, the health side of this.
I did have to have a question regarding Eastern Home Health District. I am a voting member on that and it doesn't really, like, it's not really a town council thing or not. I don't know if it is or if we want it to go back to whoever comes or if you guys want me to stay on as state rep or whatever. But I think that's going to have to be discussed because they keep asking me if, you know, I'm coming back next year and I don't know. You know, I, I think that's a council position.
Yeah, might be.
You point somebody, but.
Yeah. No, it might be good. And I, I've actually even tried and worked, dropped up an email to Brian, probably some like pointers on whoever's in the next council to give a full comprehensive list of all the groups that we liaison for, you know, as an example, I service the, uh, I mean, member for talent at Crowe. And those meetings are midday during the week. So there's going to be a need for either them or a town staff member that might be able to cover that time of day. So, um, no, so that's, that's a good recommendation. I think it's recommend saying it's Mr. Foley to see if it'd be best to have it be assigned to either a staff member of the town or of the council, the council, to serve as that voting member.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
I'll cover some of that in the town managing report.
Sounds good.
Don't want to steal my thunder.
I prefer to think I'm stealing the lightning, but.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, that I had an opportunity to, uh, uh, to hop into the, uh, Veterans Recognition Commission, uh, committee uh, meeting, uh, this last Thursday. Uh, it was a bittersweet being the, the last one, um, that we did discuss. And I appreciate, uh, Mr. Foley and Ms. Hancock discussing, uh, some of the issues that we have where, again, the, uh, the biggest thing that we had going forward is how to make it easier for the VRC to do their own fundraising uh, for, uh, either for the wall, the wall or for its own operational funds. Um, and, uh, that, that was a, uh, main part of the discussion that I was involved in. Uh, again, uh, I appreciate Lisa looking into it and, uh, that they are looking forward to hearing any information that you might be able to provide them about, um, being able to, uh, streamline that process or to be, uh, to, uh, um, to set that up in some way. And, uh, that's, uh, that they also wanted to, uh, there was a discussion about how no matter what happens with the, uh, sidewalk, I know that there's, uh, there's currently litigation going on regarding the sidewalk or at least, uh, filed litigation that it's, uh, that they are not part of that. And it's that the VRC is still going forward with its development of the, uh, of their own, uh, veterans memorial area, uh, that's been identified. And, um, I don't think there's anything else. It's just been an honor of serving with them, an honor of working with them, uh, and that we hope the best for, uh, I mean, parents on his, uh, on recovery. And that he's been doing well. And then we hope on his health, uh, that he has a speedy recovery as well. And, uh, for anyone that's interested, that there is a GoFundMe page, uh, to help offset some of the expenses that he has. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
And Councilor Luba, Councilor Meehan.
Look, Michelle, with people in facilities, you know, last week, um, talk, we'll talk around the ADA sidewalks, um, for the green and personally, they're disappointed, but still kind of remain optimistic about it. Um, they also talked about progress of surveys they're trying to do to, um, to get out there for people. Just bill is trying to figure out any needs they may, um, need. And I think that is really it. Um, it's, I don't know what's going to happen in a few weeks, but it was really an honor to work with them, that group. They're really a dedicated, passionate group. Um, and yeah, I don't know though, that was pretty crumby then. Yeah. So, yeah, that sums it up.
Thank you. That brings us to item eight, new business, eight point one consideration resolution, authorizing the town manager into a contract. We do a contract extension with Cella Waste Systems for service, Waste Systems Inc. for services effective July first, twenty twenty-four for five years. Let me have with us also tonight, Mike Wilkinson, who is our point person with Cella.
So the, um, obviously our contract is coming to an end, uh, and but we, we gave Cella a, an opportunity to, to give us their best offer in consideration of extending uh, the contract with them for another five years. A couple of points, it's a very volatile and unpredictable market. Uh, I myself have, uh, as town manager and resident, I have no preference either way. So I'll leave it to council uh, to decide which way, if, if we secure the five years, I'm confident that, uh, we did okay. If we were to go out to bid to another and see what else is out there, I'm confident we would do okay, uh, there as well. I don't know. Um, so that, that's what we're kind of weighing here tonight. Mike Wilkinson is our waste expert on many, many levels and has been babysitting, uh, this contract situation, uh, since I've been here. So, um, Mike, you want to, uh, go into, uh, what we have?
Sure. So I wrote a long memo and if you read it, I'm sorry. It's like, it's like a really bad L stat question. So, but just to go over things briefly, so we have three contracts. One is collection. That's the cost of, to collect everything. So, uh, and it's based right now on a fifty-two hundred house count of what we have for houses. And that number has stayed the same since we started with them. So it hasn't gone up, which is good because we have more than fifty-two hundred houses in the country. In the house. Um, they've agreed to freeze our, our collection costs for two years at what they currently are. Uh, and that's about two thirds of our budget. That's almost $700,000. And then for the years, three to five, it will go up five percent. So that's, that's the savings part. So we, we could save some money there, assuming in a normal year, there'd be increases. So we'd get that.
Five percent a year or five percent in total?
No, five percent a year and years three. They would also agree if we wanted to do it, not to charge us for the collection of the free bulk months, bulky one, bulky waste month that we do each year. Uh, we just finished one. Uh, they did a very good job. It took them three weeks to sweep the town. There was a lot of stuff out there. I think the fact that we had it out in the budget, then took it back, then put it back out. I think people got wind of that and they put a lot of stuff out. My favorite was like, uh, uh, an eight-foot metal bar built with cement, which they couldn't pick up, but someone must have done some with it. I don't know what was in the cement. So, uh, so they, they would agree with do that, which is roughly about $30,000 that would save if we wanted to do the bulky waste. We'd still have to pay for the tipping fee, but that fee would not be charged, which is a, a good thing. We, that's what we've been doing for the last four years. Disposal's the next one, and that's going to be the part of the increase. So disposal is the tipping fee of both revenues and bulky waste. So we're in the seventh year of a contract we signed in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. So we're at the end of the contract. So it was signed in a different market period. Back then, the market was much better. Costs were lower. We didn't have twenty percent inflation in the last three or four years. So their number is a hundred and ten dollars per ton worth seventy-eight, sixty-two. So that, that, that's a big increase in one year. But that's, that's what they're offering. They're asking, but they're offering to keep that one-ten for two years constant, and then it would go up in years three to five. Uh, bulky waste, same thing. It's going up from eighty-eight to one oh three. Um, again, it's the cost of, of tipping, getting rid of it, you know, and I think that they shipped that out to Ohio or something. I mean, there's cost to that. So, uh, and the last one is single stream recycling. So that's obviously the, what we do with our single stream. That's, that, the recycling market, as I've mentioned before, uh, back when we signed this contract in seventeen eighteen, there was actually a market. We were getting paid money. You know, between eleven and nineteen, we brought in about $340,000 of revenue. So we used to be making $10 and $25, but then the recycling market collapsed. China decided not to accept recycling. There really is no market right now. So, um, we're, right now, we're at $62 a ton, which I negotiated in this last contract, uh, this one-year contract we're on. Um, or one-year addenda, which hasn't changes. Um, so that, that would go up again too. So that would add, add to our budget. Um. So just getting back to a couple of just general things, as I mentioned, they're not going to go, they're going to get rid of headcount in this, this agreement. So, um, I guess that's a good thing because we don't have to deal with fifty-two hundred we're at now to whatever number we might be at. Uh, they're going to keep the cost of a, a tub at $80, which is kind of the going rate. They're going to, going to continue to the bulky waste. So if you want to call and get four items, you can still get it for $34, which is a pretty good deal. If you called a private caller and come get four items at your house, it'd probably cost a hundred bucks for them to show up. So they've been doing that for a long time. And again, that's, that's at the residence cost. So, um, some other, just general information about recycling. So as you know, it's gone up a lot as far as the cost of doing business for everything. That includes something like this. So inflation, things like that. If you look at the other market, the markets in the area, a lot of towns are paying a lot more than what we're paying right now because we're at the end of the contract. For example, Ellington's paying one hundred and eight per ton now. Uh, Fulton and Hebron are at a hundred and eleven and change. Mansfield just went out and they're at one fifteen per ton. Uh, Eastford Hampton and Scott, one fifteen also. So, um, I guess the important ones are Mansfield because they just went out and, and they, they have one fifteen is, is what they said. On, uh, uh, at Lincoln, uh, that's a different vendor and they have one away and they're in the middle of a contract. So they probably signed it a couple of years ago. So. Um, just a couple of things to add. It, it is a good time to talk about the good things about recycling. So, you know, if we looked at everything we did, done over the last decade and a half, it's a pretty good story because we've done a lot of things to try to maintain service but reduce costs. So we've, you know, we went to automated pickup, single stream, picking up every other week, encouraging more recycling, reducing months of free bulky waste, changing to a larger cart. So all those things, you know, helped us reduce our tonnage. You know, in oh nine, it was 5,000 tons. Now we're at about forty-six hundred. Um, uh, so we've saved money in our budget. If our high budget was 1.3 million in two thousand twelve, uh, it, it went down to a low in two thousand twenty of 948,000. So dollar, dollar, that's $321,000 in savings. So. And then a number I like, I, I think it's good to be talked about is if, if we approve this, our budget will only be 2.4% higher than it was in two thousand and twelve. So that's 0.18% a year over thirteen years. So I think that's a pretty good story. Uh, if we hadn't done all those changes and we had built all those costs into our budget, it would be a lot, lot, lot larger. So that's a good thing. So overall, uh, again, these changes would e, increase about $180,000 in the budget over two years. It would all hit in the first year and then the second year would just be flat. So it's really eight percent a year, I guess sixteen over two years. Um, and that includes the savings as far as, uh, bulky waste and, and also the $70,000 for no increase in the fee of collection fee. So that's kind of a summary. Um, generally, I kind of look at it, it's a difficult, uh, question to answer or decide. Um, the real question is, uh, you know, why would you want to not approve it? I guess you'd have to look at it as two things. Do we have poor service? I don't think we have poor service. I think we have very good service. And the second thing is, do you think we can get a better price if we went out to bid? And I'm not sure we would. Um, and I know that all the nuances that we've kind of developed with them will go away. Um, uh, as you know, garbage service is regional. Well, you know, Cella is the regional kind of leader in this area. So, um, so I'm not sure if the nuances of certain things like headcount and, uh, $34 for, for bulky items. If we do a bid, we're going to have to kind of flatten everything out and just kind of, this agreement goes away and we kind of start over with everyone. And I, I'm just concerned that, um, like Brian said, I'm, I, I, I think we do fine, but I'm not sure if we get as good a deal as we have with this. Uh, I, I can't say that for sure. So I, based on those, those would be the two things I would look at in my mind if I'd say, you know, why not to approve it, I guess, you know? Because when we switch, when we, when we did an RFP oh seven, it was really because the, the, who we had at that point really didn't want to do anything without us to kind of help save money. And also the servant one, service wasn't very good. So it was an easy decision for Steve, uh, at that time for the council to go out to bid at that time. So.
Thank you, Mike. And when did, um, Willie Waste become Cella when they take over?
Uh, probably like three or three years ago, maybe three or four years. Hasn't been that long.
Okay. And you feel that the transition has been pretty much, you're dealing with the same folks, the same style of interaction between them?
Yeah, the, the service has been as good or better. Um, they're very responsive. Uh, like I said, they just did the whole town bulky waste. They didn't really complain how much stuff was out there and, or anything like that. They just kind of, they gave us an update like it's been a week, we're through Tuesday, it's been two weeks, we're through Wednesday, you know, so. Um, and all the people, I mean, there's different people, but they're very nice. They're very, they're willing to work with you on different things. And, um, when they came forward with this, I, I told them, well, we'll look at what we do and try to give us something that helps what we do and how we do it. Because that's important to us, you know, bulky waste is something that we've tried to keep doing for residents on a free basis. So what can you do? Can you continue to do that? So I, I tried to have them not just bring something cookie cutter. I wanted them to bring something that felt be similar to what we've been doing.
They're also coming out with an app.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Where, you know, it'd be a lot easier for customers to order bulky waste, uh, pickup or to, they miss a pickup or they have questions, when's the pickup? Um, all the, all the kind of stuff that Sarah and Lynn would have to field down there. They're ground balls, but it'd be nice not to have to do and, uh, if they have that app. A lot of the companies are moving in that direction. They've already launched it in other markets, they said, very, very well received.
Yeah, yeah, a couple months, yeah.
So I, I think that'll be helpful as well. He brings up a good point, the service and proximity. Uh, if someone misses a pickup and, uh, they got to come get it, it was close by, um. I, I, I don't think anyone has too many complaints about how the service is better than that. Uh, but again, I, I have no preference either way. So, um, we'll look to your guidance.
Sure. Thank you. I'll open the floor for questions. Councilor Murray.
What kind of administrative, uh, workload would the town have to assume to go out to bid and then transition to potentially a new vendor? and then transition to potentially a new vendor and deal with, uh, the, the nuances?
Yeah, so, uh, putting a bid together wouldn't be that difficult. Uh, that's something we could do. Putting a bid out, getting bids back, and if it wasn't Will, if it wasn't Casella, the switch would be a challenge. It was a challenge when we did it, you know, it can, it can certainly be done. But it's basically, you know, you're bringing in a whole new company. To, again, if, if Casella wouldn't get it, my guess would they would still be the, probably get it because of the regional leader. But it's assumed they did it. It's a big process. They have to, they have to, you know, they have to map the town. They gotta figure out how do they wanna do it, how it's gonna be different. You know, we have to, uh, you know, obviously, uh, communicate that to the residents. You know, their days may change when they get it picked up. It may be done differently. So it's a, it was a big process when we did it. And, and so it's, it's not an easy thing, but it, we, we did it once, uh, in oh-seven. And we did it when we bought all the carts too. So, and we delivered, they delivered carts all over the place. Here, the carts are here, but, um, so, uh, but it's, it's a big process. It'll take, it'll takes a lot of focus if that were to happen.
Right. And I, I guess I would just, um, make sure that we consider the administrative ask, uh, of the town beyond just the dollars and cents of this budget. Uh, but to understand that there is an administrative workload that is associated with going out to bid. Not, not that I don't think it's worth it. I just think that, that needs to be part of the consideration. I, I also wonder, uh, I know there has been some discussions on a state level of addressing municipal waste as, you know, it is not unique to talent that, um, you know, there's a lot of stressors on the municipal waste system. Uh, do you think this five-year commitment would lock us in, in a negative way? If there is changes on a statewide level, would this give us enough flexibility and mobility if we needed to make changes to be responsive to other opportunities that might come up?
Yeah, um, I don't think it does. Five years is, uh, it's not that long, the period. And I think whatever the state does, it won't be fully realized probably in that period. Some may. I mean, they're obviously trying to do these producer responsibility bills that shift the responsibility to producers, whether it's tires or propane tanks or potentially cardboard. But that, those are just kind of certain items. Is that gonna bring some type of new facility online or something like that? I, I don't, I don't see it happening in, in the next five years. I, I, I don't think it will get there in that time. Hopefully, it'll get there soon, but probably not five years.
Uh, and then, uh, the last thing I wanted to say is I, I did actually read through your memo more than once. And I, I thought it was very well done. Um, you provided a lot of information pretty succinctly there. So thank you for providing all that information to us. Thank you.
You guys, are there any other questions? You got members?
If you don't want to even comment, I'd like to make, I can really skip before on some occasion, but, um, if you can do your homework before you come to town council and get a different, at least a couple of different support. So they can go get it. Uh, then you got, you have one. Like now, there's not enough.
Correct. This is not, this is just one option at this point. Correct.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Any other questions?
Yeah, how many other companies are out there? Do you have an idea?
Again, there's, you know, the Paines Works in this area, USA Recycling, Recycling. Again, I, there's a, there's a handful, but those are the other ones I know of. And obviously, as I mentioned, Casella's kind of the larger ones in this area. And they have the largest facility in the area, um, to take things in also.
Yeah, I can't, I can't recall the company, when I dreamt of it, one is out in Windsor or somewhere in that area. I think is like the next biggest regional one that covers maybe a half dozen towns.
They're out there.
Yeah.
They, they've come a calling.
Yeah.
But you start looking at distances to travel and to set up here in town. And then, you know, they'll probably throw a sweetheart deal for a year or two to get in the door.
Yeah.
And then, um, just on proximity. Again, I, I, I don't, it doesn't matter which way you decide on this to me, but, um, we can't go wrong either way.
Thank you, Brian. And the relationship with Casella's been pretty good, right?
Yeah, I think it's been very good.
Understatement. Seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions outlined in eight point one. So moved. So by Council Luba, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you by Council Murray. All is in favor, say them by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, unanimous. That brings us to eight point two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thanks.
Consideration of resolution for a supplemental appropriation of two hundred and forty-six dollars to increase the service budget by that amount due to additional state revenue.
Um, this is obviously a small thing, but something we need to do, uh, at any rate, small monetary wise, but I have Bev here. Uh, thank you, Bev, for coming tonight to explain more.
It's an amplified grant that we've been getting for years and, um, and at one time I thought that two hundred and forty-six was not gonna keep coming in, and they awarded it to us again. So I would just rather have it in the right proper place in our budget. We're at least on that. Um, the funding, uh, this thing was chosen, uh, once again to focus on baby, uh, and drug abuse on, on kids. Um, some of that money, we're holding a workshop, uh, at the high school, um, the second hidden in playing site. Uh, we'll be giving to great, uh, project graduation, other projects in the school. So it's more about just getting all the dollars.
Are there any questions from council members? Right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution outlined in eight point two.
So moved.
By Council Murray, is there a second? And by Council Edercheck, seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, say them by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Eight point three, consider for, consideration of resolution for appropriation for pickleball courts at Herring Cove in the amount of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and the setting of a hearing on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. And I believe that this is based off of, us being awarded the Steve Grant. We have the town match. I believe the reasoning behind setting it for the twenty-eighth was to not, I mean, we throw in council, a public hearing process, get to a lot of speed on everything else before, uh, having this book forward.
Uh, yes, thank you. So on July, uh, tenth, uh, we received a, we'll, we, in knowing that we wanted to apply for a Steve Grant, we received a proposal from Gordian, uh, for three, three hundred and seventy-three thousand. And, and August, we submitted the application in, in a fairly quick manner, thanks to Meg Masa, who is on virtually here to, uh, answer any questions and probably bring some more clarity. Uh, in September of twenty-nine, uh, September twenty-ninth of this year, we received the grant award from OPM. Thank you to our state, uh, friends and, and officials, everyone that had a hand in helping us get that. Very similar to the contracts, uh, award or the, uh, the grant award that we got for the Crandles Park, uh, tennis courts. Same thing with the twenty percent match, uh, which the town match, again, as you said, would be eighty-three thousand dollars. Lisa has identified CNRE, CNRE funds, uh, for that. And again, it's going to be for a pickleball court, uh, sole use pickleball court, not line for tennis at, uh, Herring Cove. Um, again, Megan's here to provide an, provide any answers to any questions you have.
One quick question, assuming this goes with hearing on the, uh, twenty-eighth is approved, what is the timeline for construction and completion of the, the court? I know winter is usually not the best time to do that kind of heavy work, but.
Well, so we have about, technically, uh, we have four years to get it done. I certainly don't believe that would be the case. So I would go with the same timeline with the tennis court, so within a year.
I appreciate that. Megan, would you say that's accurate?
Yeah, I'm expecting construction, um, next year. I'm hoping we'll be able to get a good start in the spring.
Any other questions from council members?
Can you just refresh our memory on this? These pickleball courts, uh, this also includes some ADA accessibility to these courts with some, uh, are we talking about striping the parking lot there too? Or having the court entrance be handicap accessible?
Similar to the, the court at Crandles where we made, uh, and it made that handicap, uh, ADA compliant. Uh, and it previously hadn't been. We would do the same at Herring Cove. If you recall, um, the Girl Scouts did a ADA study on Herring Cove. We've already made, um, significant improvements, parking, uh, stripes, signage and that sort of thing, uh, for Herring Cove. Yes, absolutely. The, the ADA court would be, um, ADA accessible. Megan did a good job making sure that our, our contractor on Crandles was completely ADA, right down to the height of the latch going in, which needed to be adjusted. Um, she caught it. So, um, she did a good job.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Council Murray. Any other questions? Alright, seeing none, I don't care.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I need, I just wanted to make, uh, a statement that, while, uh, my professional job is for the Department of Economic and Community Development, uh, the decision-making for this grant is made outside of my agency. And therefore, there is no, uh, conflict of interest in my voting on this.
Thank you for that great patient.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution outlined in eight point three.
So moved.
So by Council Luba, second by Council Murray. You know, for discussion, all is in favor, say them by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. That brings us to eight point four. Consideration of resolution to dissolve the town of health and self-consciousness advisory task force. And I'll kick it over to Ryan, who'll do a quick summary. There's a lot of information here from resolution back in twenty twenty that was first established.
Yeah, so, so while it was, I think it was fantastic that we had, um, the task force and, and they did, um, provide a lot of guidance to us. It has gone stale, just, I guess is the blunt way to put it. And, uh, Bev, you wanna give a, a summary of some of the, the things that, uh, have happened and where we are now?
They, they also had a very, as you know, some of the members were on a very aggressive schedule that meant twice a month. Did a lot of research in the community, um, numerous guest speakers having to have. And the highlight was the survey that they completed. And there were some recommendations in my department to can carry on and forward with those recommendations to work with, um, our established local prevention council, that means Stern, uh, once a month or so. And once a public staff with, uh, next to human service, assistant human service director, we can move forward.
If I can add one more thing.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, one of the recommendations that came out of the task force was that the town has a, um, addiction specialist essentially on staff. We have opioid, uh, grant money coming in. It would certainly cover that, uh, staff position. Not opioid grant money, the opioid settlement money, um, coming in that we would likely use that money to, um, adhere to the recommendations of the task force.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
So is that something that is, is in the works right now? And when is that money expected?
Any idea on that, or Lisa?
We've already received several, uh, contributions. Each year we will get more. But we have close to almost fifty thousand dollars that is.
David, our work, I'm talking to Val, so it wouldn't be a, a staff person, another employee.
Yeah.
Like we would contract to be a consultant. And so until I'm fully staff, I didn't want to initiate that, cause I want that position to work together.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have the money to, or the capacity really to take on another staff member. So contracting out seems to be, and they're already up to speed. They have the benefit of the entire thing behind them. So that that's, and it would happen pretty quickly once, uh, everything's, uh, cleared. That, that was already in those conversations.
Excellent. Thank you. Alright, any other comments or questions? Alright, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the draft resolutions outlined under eight point four. So by Council Luba, is there a second? Thank you by Council Edercheck. Uh, just before we make, make the vote, just so I can have a common view on it. Again, thank everyone for all their help and service to the mental health task force. It was a commendable effort and I think there's a lot of good work that came from there that'll be good forward. For budgetary recommendations, but just in general with the town. So, thank you all. With that, all is in favor, say them by saying aye.
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 That is unanimous. Brings us eight point five reappointments. We have three residents being reappointed, the Tomboy Library Foundation. So I would entertain a motion to approve those reappointments as outlined in eight point five A.
So moved.
So moved by Council Luba, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Murray. Seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, say them by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. That brings us to nine, old business, which there is, which there is nine, item ten, report of the town manager. I read the report you're writing for the first year of month. Are there any updates since that first?
Okay, let me run through, um, some things on my checklist. First, um, the Read Across America event, you guys, uh, council will be much different than them. It's December sixteenth. Uh, you were pivotal in making this happen. I would, uh, likely keep you with, with your permission on the invite list for when that happens. Again, it's December sixteenth and leaves Saturday. We would be at the cider mill, uh, road cemetery, or south cemetery, they call it. The archaeological dig is gonna move forward on the green. Uh, we'll, we'll figure out the funding, whether we should do that, uh, ARCA funding prior to the cost at most, not to exceed basically seven thousand dollars, uh, likely less, depending on, um, if, what they find, if anything. Uh, the, the CSP MOU contract, um, the, the CSP contract and the MOU, where I asked for a few, uh, basic things, uh, is a bit of a stalemate here. Whether they agreed to do everything in the MOU, they just didn't agree to signing the MOU. And I believe that would be fear out of setting precedence to other towns that would not wanna ask for the same things that we have here. They weren't, um, excessive by any stretch. Again, it was a, a quarterly crime report, a minimal quarterly crime, uh, crime report, but more than what we have now with some comparisons. Um, some, uh, communication, basic communication involvement in the hiring of a resident trooper here in town. And then, uh, just some assistance should the, the town need to, uh, do some accreditation with OST, which they likely would if Walt were to hire a, um, school resource officer. Uh, so that the MOU is kind of a stalemate. I'm, I'm working, uh, with Councilman Luba and likely, uh, our state representative to come to some sort of, um, mutual agreement where we give a little, uh, little give and take. The Connecticut Water Company, uh, sale is moving forward, working closely with our attorney. Uh, and Bev, uh, both our, our town attorney and the attorney hired by the Water Commission, uh, to look at that. I have some ideas how we can, um, assist moving forward and might be looking for some volunteers. To, we have an opening on that commission.
He's looking at you.
He knows who I'm looking at. Uh, so that, that, that's, uh, that's moving forward. I talk to you, thank you to, uh, Councilperson Murray for coming in and meeting with Lisa and I to discuss the quarterly fiscal report. I think we've come to some, uh, pretty good, uh, ideas on that, and that's gonna definitely move forward, uh, with the new council. We do have a, a person in our tax office and continue to, um, work through that, the, some of the staffing issues there. Gay St. Louis, we thank her and the two assistants who are getting trained up, uh, rapidly, uh, to make sure that this, the tax office is moving, moving smoothly. I was contacted by somebody who runs a daycare here in town. And she told us about a law, state law, that allows the, the town to provide tax relief to daycare facilities. Uh, should we want to, you know, have to, but we could. Um, and again, that'll come to, to next council. I've met with Jason. He's provided me the particulars. He's provided me with a rough estimate of the costs, but I think he needed a little more information on that. I wanna say at most it would be around fifty thousand dollars, um, tax relief for them a week. That's, that's at a hundred percent, um, if we were to, and it was, and it's for a defined amount of years as well. So, um, again, it's something through the state. I haven't had a lot of conversation on it. Uh, they may, the, the, they may bring it to council, um, at some point and, and present, present their case to, uh, the town council. Prior Lynn's departure, we, Sarah Beth, Lynn and I, uh, and, and Mike as well, have started to prepare for the, uh, new five new council persons coming on and, and in preparation, uh, for that. And that is making sure they're familiar with all the departments, uh, getting one-on-ones, uh, with myself, getting, uh, the departments in front of town council in the first month or two, or the, the coming, uh, meetings, uh, to make it clear what commissions, uh, they sit on, uh, and, and any other things that we need to do when there's some document preparation and, uh, prepare to get to them, as you're all certainly aware of. At the, and the last thing, um, I just wanna thank council. Every single one of you, you assisted in changing my life. I really appreciate it. You, you fired me and put me here. Um, I couldn't be any happier, uh, with your kindness, your professionalism. And just your willingness to work with me and your patience, uh, to help me learn. Every single one of you, uh, has been absolutely fantastic to work with. Uh, I, I, I've seen other councils and I'll leave it at that. Um, you guys have been fantastic. You asked me to work on the polarization in town. I agree. I couldn't do that alone. I needed to enlist help. All of you helped. I reached out to all of you individually and asked you to bend and not break on some things at some time, at some point. I couldn't do that alone. I needed to enlist help. All of you helped. I reached out to all of you individually and asked you to bend and not break on some things at some time, at some point. I know it was heavy for some, I know it was heavy. And you did, and I really appreciate that. And it's been, I think, a really good year, and you set a great role model for the next council, just on your professionalism and your willingness to work together. I, I hope and pray that our next council has the same relationships that we have. You have all been fantastic. I will work to try to guide them in that way. Hopefully, I have two, two other council people to assist me in that, but what a model we've set for not just the next council, but all councils in town. When you read about the nonsense going on in other towns, it stopped here. You asked me to take on some of our most difficult situations here in town. I've certainly run head-on right into it. And I couldn't do that alone. Again, I needed to enlist all of your help to do that. You certainly backed me in that regard, and I really appreciate it. Again, you've set the bar high. I will work to continue to do that. A meeting with, I offered to meet with all of you. Hopefully, you take me up on it. One already has. I'm sure it's proven to be beneficial to Lou. You sent me a picture. It was. It'll be, it'll be good if you come see me. But basically, I wish you all the best. I'd love to see you again volunteer. You already have so much leadership on a commission or some sort of committee. That would be fantastic. Again, I love you all so much. So, thank you for everything. That's all I have. Thanks.
Comments or questions?
Thank you, Brian.
You're the one. Okay.
Council Murray?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Can, can you give us an update on Trooper Eklund and his upcoming change?
Yes, they posted for an administrative resident trooper, which is looking at Trooper Eklund was. He wasn't just a resident trooper, he was administrative trooper, which really, he's the leader of them and in working with the town moving forward. I'm willing to accept or consider, as much as distasteful it could be for me, a sergeant coming in as a, instead of an administrative resident trooper. The costs to a, of a sergeant is typically more than a resident trooper. However, the cost more from Trooper Eklund would be close. I do not have those exact numbers yet. While they did send out a teletype, yes, they still use teletypes for a new resident trooper. I'm trying to, again, come to some sort of balance. Basically, I'll accept the sergeant if they sign the MOU and basic services for the town. When I say basic services, the three things that I mentioned earlier. So I have, again, one of our councilpersons and likely two, hopefully reaching out to try to strike that deal.
Thank you. Do we expect a gap in service due to Eklund's upcoming?
Are you, how about this? Can I rephrase my question? Are you concerned about a potential gap in service?
No, I'm not concerned. I mean, you know, it's the gap in the administrative services potentially, but again, we have Troop C here in town. I don't expect it to linger on. It might take about a month, Kevin, which is his right to, you know, gave his notice to move on in employment elsewhere. So a couple of weeks after that, we'll be down a trooper, but I can certainly work for Troop C, I'm sure, to kind of swage that.
Thank you. Were you still considering some sort of opening event for the task force at Cranwell?
Yes, you'll see an email tomorrow.
Okay. Can you give us an update on the hiring of the new head librarian?
Yes. Oh, my God, I had that checked off. I came here to jump right over it. I had it today. We had, we had interviews today with three. It went very well. Yeah, thankfully had the assistance of the foundation, the friends, and one, one other one. They were fantastic. Of course, and Mike Wilkinson. We interviewed extensively, three candidates, eleven questions. They graded. We came out with two great candidates, but again, all three, I think, could have done the job. So we will move next week to have a final sit-down with the lead candidate. And then, you know, there will be a decent transition time, I believe, hopefully with Barbara, to get, to get whoever that is up to speed.
Thank you. What about the, the Human Services Department hiring?
Where are you on that, Bev?
We interview next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. So that's, that's going along.
Yeah.
And there was a vacancy due to retirement in the town manager's office. Is that also progressing?
Yes, we've, we've offered and she's accepted. Anne from Public Works is going to be taking that job. She created a vacancy for the Public Works administrative assistant. That has been posted. Interest in both positions were robust. And did so well on the first, like last year, I believe, or just about a year, just about a year ago. And did so well in that interview process. You know, it hurt not to take her then. It's no, it's, it's, it's the right decision to bring her there now and then open it up. Many of the candidates that applied for that position of the town manager assistant will have been contacted and will also apply for Anne's job in DPW. Scott Lappin, obviously, has the director on board and involved in that process in every.
Okay. And in our last town council meeting, you mentioned that there's an engineering report coming out on the jail property.
Yep.
Is that coming to council soon? How is that progressing?
Megan, if you're, if you're paying attention there, hopefully you are with us. Keep it on mute her. So she's, she's been watching the jail project. I have, I believe, a draft of the report on my desk. Where are they with that, Megan?
So we do have a conditions assessment report that we received. And we do have some preliminary cost estimates. I'm still waiting for design plans for the repairs. And so once I have all of that, if that's something that needs to go to council to discuss, we can certainly do that. Expecting, hopefully, in the next week or two to get that design plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that update very much. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions or comments?
Members?
All right, seeing that, we'll move to items, item eleven, adoption of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes as outlined in eleven point one and eleven point two.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so moved by Council Luba, second by Council Murray. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say in my way, saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Item twelve, correspondence to council.
Yeah, in the past two weeks, there have been two emails that have come in from the public regarding sidewalks. We don't want to talk about those anymore.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item thirteen, chairperson's report. So we have a CROG policy board meeting, executive meeting, eleven thirty tomorrow. The executive session, right, forms evaluation, followed by a policy board meeting. As mentioned earlier, there was a policy board discussion with, or correspondence rather, around the policy board. Writing a letter of support for the churches in the following March, so we appreciate that. Other than that, there actually will be a final chairperson's hour first. If anyone would like to attend for the last one, even though we don't have any immediate meetings, you never know if we need a special meeting for any particular purpose, but hopefully there isn't. But I do appreciate all the time everyone has provided over the past few years. It's been a wonderful experience and looking forward to the next council and their efforts to tackle a lot of the good stuff we've started and able to accomplish and see those things come to fruition over the coming years. All right. So that brings us to item fourteen, communications and petitions from council members.
Okay.
Councilmember, you to check.
So it's been a pleasure working with and following you guys. Thank you so much, Dan. I just appreciate it. I want all you guys to promise you and whatever happens, happens. So thank you all. Luke, John.
Thank you.
You know, I.
Appreciate it. Any other communications? Is there a?
Same thing. I'd like to thank everybody. I'd like to thank the staff. For me, it's been six years and it's been a great experience. Learned a ton of town government. And I'd also like to call out Mr. Jones and your leadership. You run a really good meeting. You're organized, you're prepared, and I know how much time it takes to do that, to do that, right? So do you. Yeah. So I want to thank you for your leadership, did a great job.
Thank you. You as well, John. Even a pleasure to work with as well. Always candid, always good to reach out, and never difficult to get in contact with. So I appreciate all that, right? Council Luba?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, well, just some other comments for the oncoming town council that I'd ask them to continue on with, you know, being a representative of the BRC. Continue on with them and work and develop with them with the Veterans Memorial. I, I think that that's something that will be great. And that definitely adds to the town. I implore the town to continue working with them to develop the veteran services officer. That's been a petition of mine from the very beginning, from when I first got involved here. I hope that the new council carries on and continues on with chapter fifty-one revision that we've been working on. I think that's something that is, that we could use for the town. And then it's bittersweet. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with all of you, that it's something that, as I tell all my friends, the best full-time job with no pay that I've ever watched. I think that it's a truly a calling and it's truly, it's been a blessing to work with. I, I think I speak for many of us there, if not all of us, that it's a, this is truly a labor of love that we care about our town, we care about our residents. And that I implore more people to get involved, support your town. I'm a true believer that as citizens of this great country, this great state, and this great town, that we have an obligation to give back to our town. And I would just implore more people to get involved. Thank you very much, you all. I thank you all very much. It's been truly an honor and a privilege to serve with all of you. And I, I promise you that for anyone that is returning, for the two there, our incumbents, I'll be watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Luba. Council down.
Let me just show, I just want to recognize the name. Dennis Copland. He worked for the town for quite a few years. I think he was a hero, didn't he, kids? And we have a lesson. At that, it was a very nice experience working and running out of town, how that shit goes. And it was a pleasure to see all of you. And Mr. Lu, I mean, Deed, John.
You think you're the name.
It was a nice experience. That is like it says. It's totally different experience, let's put it that way. As the, I guess, business goes on. Thanks very much for putting it with me and I guess, carry on.
Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate that.
So it's been six years, six years that, that I've been doing this. Two as chair, working with Deed as my vice, which was a lot, but it's really been a privilege and an honor to work for this town and with the staff that are amazing. Gone through a few town managers, so hopefully, you know, Brian is going to be sticking around for a while here. And I will say that I found, for the most part, you know, the first couple of years that we had, you know, we didn't have, we had some people that just didn't want to work together, that just outright, flat right, did not want to. And this council has not done like that. And I think that is something worthy to note, that while we don't always agree on everything, we've all been very respectful of each other, very respectful of other people's opinions. We've all done a really good job here of listening to the community and listening to each other and listening to the staff to do what's best for all of talent. Because once you sit in this seat up here, your party doesn't matter anymore. It doesn't. Either you're here for the townspeople or you're here for your party. And this council has not done that. And I think that is something worthy of note, because as Brian mentioned, you don't really see that a lot nowadays. And I'm honored and privileged to say that I served on the council that just really cared about the town and not about what the party thought, which I think is something, you know, it's something to be proud of. And I hope the next council, regardless of who is here, who is not here, you know, that they can do that same sort of thing, that they can find that same sort of joy and worthiness to continue to work together and recognize all of the different voices in this town. Very hard leaving here. I didn't do it willingly. I did not.
Well, you can't, I thought you got to name it.
She did. You know what? I did not do it like easily. And I hate, I hate that this is my last town council meeting. I really do. And I will continue to work to be of service to the town at any level that I'm at. And I just, you know, want to thank especially, you know, my long time over here, my right-hand man there. And then Malu came on, you know, and us three have, we've made a really great relationship and team, and then working with you guys. I think, again, this is the first time in six years, the last two, that it's truly just been for the betterment of the town. And I appreciate that from all of you. I really do. It's been an honor. My privilege.
Thank you. Any other communications or petitions? All right, seeing that, we'll move to fifteen, publicly listed participation on any subject from the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. Again, if you're on Zoom, you hit the start time function for an mobile device or the raise hand function. Otherwise, if you're in the room, you can press table and state your name and address for the record. Not seeing anyone on Zoom, we will start with in-person.
Sean Laffin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. It has been a pleasure working with you all, and I've certainly learned a lot more about local government. For those of you that are not seeking reelection, I thank you for your service to the town. That said, I hope that the town manager and the outgoing members can stress the importance of the road salt contamination issue to the incoming new town council with the goal of removing any sort of, any sort of adjustment or learning period for that upcoming council. Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to assure you, Mr. Laffin, I can talk to everybody here on my side of the aisle about the importance of this issue. I have asked for changes to the task force going forward to include the public. And also in speaking with Councilwoman Murray, we've talked about even me and my state role, staying involved with the council. I mean, with that task force, I think that'll be important to bridge the deep, the deep in the town. And Katie and I have worked really well together, trying to go through all of this. So I don't think it's going anywhere. I think we're going to all make sure Katie on her side, my people on my side, they understand how important this is. And I'm not going anywhere either. So this has been something that I've been fighting for literally since the first year of me being on council. So everything in government has happened slow, but be nice to pick up the pace a little bit. So I just, please rest assured that it's not falling off my radar.
Councilmember, you just wanted that.
I, I did. I, I agree with everything Tammy just said. And I would like to, to personally thank you for your diligence in coming to these meetings and for also taking the time to clearly listen to what we're saying. And when you come up at the end of each meeting, you do bring in something that happened in that meeting. So you know, we know how boring these meetings can be.
We don't want to be here.
Yeah, I, you know, I know that your situation is serious, and I agree with everything Tammy said about efforts to keep things moving at the fastest possible pace, but you have a really, you bring a good attitude and a little bit of a smile to our faces too. So thank you for that. It's, it's a little easier to listen to you when you do that. So those efforts are well played.
Can I add something else?
Sure. Go, go for it.
Yeah, I appreciate when you do talk. You never really upset and yell at us. Daisy, I'm listening on the nap again. So thank you, Scott.
Well, on Zoom, going second time for local participation, three times. Item sixteen, a German, I'll be in motion to adjourn at eight thirty-two P M. So by Council Luba, that is by Council Manuccio. So by Council Luba, that is by Council Manuccio. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say in my way, saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, thank you everyone, have a great night.